On behalf, thanks for these officials in this room and each one who has a part in the things that they talk about this evening, would you give them wisdom? And whatever they deliberate about, would they be wise and keep before them the good of this community? So, I just thank you for them. Thank you for their dedication to what they do. And I ask your blessing on them. I ask your blessing on their families. And again, Lord, your blessing on our community. Thank you. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30 on Monday, May 1st, 2017, and I'll call this meeting the first council board. Here.
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 The first item of business this evening is the approvals of the agenda. And Anthony, I know, I'm sorry, Andrew, we have a couple items to add to the agenda.
Your honor, members of the council, we have three additions tonight that came in here at the last minute. Under new bit, or old business, excuse me, item number three will be a resolution of support for the library construction grants. Under new business, we will be discussing an additional part-time staff person at the liquor store as a result of our committee of the whole discussion. And then, under the consent agenda, we have a resolution accepting the plans and specifications for public improvement 5308, which is the 2017 mill and overlay projects will be accepting the plans and specs and then authorizing advertising for bids.
And then, the only other thing I had is, we're gonna get an update on the city cleanup from Guy. Has that as well?
What about under K? Under the full committee and department reports? We never got anything under that.
All right. We're gonna get a city cleanup report from Guy.
Under K, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'll make the motion to.
Prove the amended agendas are second? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Both same side, motion carries. All right, now, under item one, under C, is a committee of the whole recap. Andrew, did you want to speak to that?
Be glad to mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we talked about the Sunday liquor sales issue. The state legislature passed law this year that would allow for Sunday liquor sales. And so, on the agenda tonight, you'll see first reading of ordinance 58, 7th series, amending chapter 11 regarding our alcoholic beverages. And we're changing the ordinance, so we become in compliance with the new state law. We then had our assistant liquor store manager, Brandon Curry, present the rationale as to why we should move forward with Sunday sales and how we're gonna roll that out under this new ordinance. And then, finally, the need for additional part-time staff at the liquor store. And when we get to that, HR director, Mike Hartwell, will speak to it. But, right now, we're running real thin with staff. And if we are gonna move forward with Sunday sales, which the plan is to move forward with Sunday sales, we're gonna need, for sure, that additional part-time employee. So, we'll talk about that later on in the agenda, but the discussion tonight focused on the Sunday sales and how we're gonna look at that going forward.
Did any of the council have anything to add? Thank you, Andrew. Also, on the committee of the whole, we did not get to Bill Sonmore's brief budget overview timeline. Did you want to go over that now, Bill?
Sure. Thank you, your honor. Each of you should've had a copy from across the street when we were over there. This is basically the same memo as we gave you last year, updated the dates and whatnot, but the process we're gonna go through as we prepare for the 2018 budget. I plan on sending letters out to our departments next week, so, May 8th. Getting those out to departments, they start to put their budget requests together. And then, from May 8th through June 19th, you know, they get those, time to put their budgets together, turn them in to me, have the council committee then meet with the city administrator and the HR director during the week of May 15th, so to kind of discuss where we go with personnel as a whole. We'll build in then, you know, the personnel budgets and whatnot. I won't go through this line by line, but look at having on June 19th, all those budgets due to me. And then, between June 19th and then, June 21st, I'll build that budget for the tax levy committee, and then, we'll get going as a tax levy committee. And that is the mayor, the city administrator, and council member Fish this year. So, looking at meetings, starting towards the end of July, rolling through August, with tax levy committee meetings. Possibly come back here to you as a council on August 7th to kind of give you an update on where things came in from departments and various requests. And come back on September 5th to do a committee of the whole meeting, just to talk about the preliminary budget and what that tax levy committee would recommend to you as a council. And for adoption, then, on September 18th. We need to have a preliminary levy and budget adopted by the end of September, because we need to get that preliminary levy up to Ottertail County by the end of September. Then, we go to December 4th is when we hold a public meeting to discuss the budget and remove that final budget, get that off to the county at the end of December, and then, we're off and running for 2018. So, just kind of a layout of the calendar for the year. Attached, you also have a form we've given out the last couple years. It's a council slash public request form. We really don't get many of these in, but we give you the opportunity, if there's something that we're not thinking of or that you want to be considered. I know, when we received one a couple years ago, it wound up kind of getting into the capital improvement planning process that way, because it was more of a capital project kind of thing. But, it's a, it's a way for you to just jot down some notes if you have, and you can get them into myself, or, you know, Andrew, the mayor, or council member Fish as well. So, that's just kind of a quick rundown on that. Any questions?
Any questions of Bill?
I had a question, your honor.
Go ahead.
It raised the issue about our two departments, Public Works and Finance. Mr. Fish is on the finance, was on the finance committee, serves on the budget, or serves on this. I had requested if the other, the chair of the Public Works could also serve on that review. We took those committees off, committee of the whole. Is that a problem if another council member sits on there, or is it typically limited to one person?
I know the charter reads, it's.
Just trying to think if it's in the charter or not.
Yeah. Simply, the charter reads, I think, city administrator, mayor, and a member of the council appointed by the council. But, I don't think you're legally precluded from that, maybe, but Rolf, you could speak to that.
Well, I don't think the, I mean, I think at a minimum, the charter would set the minimum amount. You can always add to that, I would think. I don't see that it would preclude you from doing that.
Your honor, last year, Rod and I, after you guys went through the budget, I think, did Rod and I come in and sit down at the end and was trying to figure, you know, try to get things more.
Yeah, you came in for a meeting.
Remember, we did that?
Yeah.
And I think that'd be, that way, you got, if there's a problem going in, you know, later on, because you know where you're gonna come down, it's gonna be, or we're gonna cut and or we're not gonna cut. I think that's when maybe we should bring another head in, because if you get four of them going at it, I don't know if we're gonna resolve it, it'd take a lot longer. So, it's up to, I mean, it's up, I think it's up to you, mayor, what do you want to do?
And you have till into July to figure that out as a council, too. So, I mean, you don't have to do that tonight, but you have time?
I would suggest we get input from staff and see what's the right size for that committee, because we don't, obviously, don't want to have it be a committee of the whole, but if we want to add a member, too, let's bring that up at a, we can talk about that at a committee meeting, just what's the exact right size of that committee.
I do think, I do recall that we talked about it last year, about basically having the two heads of the committees attend. So, maybe, maybe we could impose on the limb to look it up and see.
Yeah, I know we discussed, I don't remember where.
I know it was discussed, but I can't remember.
Yeah, I just think it's a, I don't think we have to kick the can down the road. It's a council preference, I think, if they want to have as a policy and, you know, that, what were the two chairs or whatever, that's what we talked about last year, I remember, fine. If they don't, fine. I don't think it's a big deal. But, I'm offering to do that, just because, you know, we talked about it last year, and it was a positive, I thought the conversation was positive about it. So, if the council wants to do it, just, fine. If not, I think it's a council decision. I don't think.
Thoughts from the council? Should we, should we say that the?
I'm fine with it.
Finance and the public folks chairs are in that committee? Any of you want to, okay with that?
That's fine.
I'm fine.
Take action for those committees?
Yeah, those committees, I mean, I, those committees are no longer in existence with the committee of the whole, but I think you simply just designate members that would serve on that with the tax levy committee, as the council members designated, so make that motion and.
So, therefore, kind of like even Jim then hasn't been designated as such?
Well, I think the first meeting of the year, Jim was specifically put on tax levy on that list of committees. So, I think you, as a council, should make a motion, designate who you'd have on that, so you put, you know, make a motion to it.
You don't have a motion to add Rod to that?
I'd make a motion that both Jim Fish and council member Rob Speedo sit on the tax committee.
I'll second your answer.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Not all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, first item, we have a proclamation for Poppy Month. And I'm gonna read a section of the proclamation. Well, Jim Fish acts as Vanna White and passes the poppy. Whereas, the American Legion Auxiliary, the Veteran of Foreign Wars, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol. And whereas each year, disabled veterans assemble and distribute memorial poppies, creating a tangible tribute to honor our nation's fallen heroes and benefit living veterans and their families. Now, therefore, I, Ben Shire, mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Poppy Month. Thank you, Jim. You're welcome.
Okay, it's not going through.
Second proclamation is for Arbor Day. And I will just read again briefly an excerpt from this Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Ben Shire, mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do proclaim April 28th, 2017, as Arbor Day in the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. So, April 28th is Arbor Day. The third proclamation is for Small Business Week. Whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, Fergus Falls supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, I, Benjamin Shire, mayor of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim April 30th through May 6th, 2017, as Small Business Week in the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, dated May 1st, 2017. Item number four, under petitions and communication, is an update from Sister Cities Commission. We have some visitors coming this week, and Bruce Garhardsen is gonna fill us in on that.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. I'm Bruce Garhardsen. I'm a member of your Sister City Commission. And what I'm gonna do is give you just a little bit of background for some of you that may not know a lot about what we do. And then, I'm gonna talk about some activities we've been undertaking, and then also extend an invitation to you all. First, for the background, the Sister City Commission was formed over 10 years ago under the auspices of Sister City International, which is a nonprofit citizen diplomacy network that creates and strengthens partnerships between communities in the United States and those in other countries. Through this organization, Fergus Falls and the surrounding area, including Underwood, Elizabeth, and Rossay, have a sister city relationship with Nordhordland, Norway, which is a largely rural area north of Bergen on the western coast. The other current members of the commission are Sean Taylor, our resident Fulbright scholar, my sister Bonnie Denzel, Jeff Isaac from Hillcrest, and Chet Haberstadt from Underwood. The Sister City Commission has been acting in different ways over the last decade, including a visit by 30-plus Norwegian dancers, craftspeople, and others in 2010, and through visiting tour groups led by Ospjorn Istabeau, some of you may know him, and we've had a lecture by a noted political scientist, Frank Orinbrot. Last summer, several members of our commission traveled to Nordhordland at the invitation of the Nordhordland Commission. We toured several important locations for industry and commercial, educational, and social activity in our sister region, and we strategized on how we might grow interaction to our mutual benefit. Because we were looking to initiate additional activity in educational exchange, along with us, we brought Jen Tilke, a middle school teacher at the Fergus Falls Public Schools, and Jesse Arbuckle, a middle school teacher from the Underwood Schools. Jesse and Jen met with their counterpart schoolteachers in Nordhordland, and they kicked off a digital storytelling and related curriculum program that they've shared over the past school year. This gives Fergus Falls and Underwood students an opportunity to regularly interact with their student counterparts in Nordhordland. It's been a tremendous success, and I won't give you a report on that here, but I hope at some point, we can show you some of the things these teachers have interacted with and the success that they've had. This effort with education has done a lot to fulfill goals that we've had to move our sister city relationship to broader community appeal than to just those with a Norwegian heritage. And most importantly, to appeal to younger people in our community, without which we won't have much resiliency over the next period of time. Both with school-age community members and their parents, we've been able to, I think, strengthen the relationship and the relevance of our mission activities in our communities. Now, for the reason, the reason I'm here to talk about this with you today, next week, from May 8th to 13th, representatives of Nordhordland will be visiting our communities. Three teachers and two high school administrators will be here to work face-to-face with their counterparts. They'll participate in some classroom activities and share with a larger group some of the digital storytelling curriculum techniques that were shared last summer with Jen and Jesse. This will be a great opportunity to strengthen the relationship with this educational exchange. There will also be two Sister City representatives that work more with museums and matters of immigration and heritage. You may remember that there is a Western Immigration Center located in Nordhordland, where buildings from our area have been relocated for the benefit of Norwegian visitors. So, I'm here to both give you this update and then also to extend an invitation so that you could meet with our counterparts to the extent possible. So, city council members and their spouses are invited to join us in Underwood, where you'll also be with our Underwood counterparts, and at the Underwood Community Center next Tuesday, May 9th, at 6:00 PM. There'll be a pork chop dinner hosted by the Underwood Lions. I do have an RSVP phone number for you, but I think rather, because this is publicly broadcast, I think I'll just give you that, and then you guys could, if you would, RSVP so that you have that phone number. Is that okay?
Sounds perfect.
Thank you, mayor and council members.
Thank you. Look forward to, hopefully, everyone can make it next Tuesday, May 9th, in Underwood. There is no open forum this evening. Under the consent agenda, you have a copy in your packets, there's also a list on the screen here for our viewers at home. Does anyone have any items on the consent agenda that they want pulled to talk about? If not, is there a resolution approving the consent agenda? Brent, thank you. Rod, second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under ordinances and resolutions, first item, we will need a first reading, we'll need an introduction of a first reading of ordinance 58, 7th series, amending chapter 11, alcoholic beverages. Rolf, did you just want to speak briefly to this for the people in the audience and at home?
Yes, I will. State law changes July 1st to permit liquor sales on Sunday. Our ordinance needs to be amended for purposes of complying with state law, at least to recognize that state law allows liquor sales to be sold on Sunday. So, the ordinance before you accomplishes that, and basically, it'll keep our city code in compliance with state law. So, I would recommend that you introduce it, and for its first reading tonight, and it will come back again in two weeks for a second reading.
Can someone introduce that?
I'll introduce, your honor.
Thank you, Justin. Second item is a second reading of ordinance 57, 7th series, dumpster enclosures. We've discussed this. Is there any questions, Director, Public Works Director? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Item number, the resolution is approved. Resolution, item number three is a resolution approving a variance request from David and Deb Prozek to allow a detached accessory building in the side yard in lieu of a rear one-third setback of a lot located in an R2 zone for the property located at 1738 South Court Street. Gordon, did you want to speak to this?
All I can say is that there was no opposition to this, and it was satisfactory to the board of zoning.
And this is the same as a neighboring property in this, or?
Yes.
In the same area?
Yes.
Any questions of Gordon?
Do we have a picture? Normally, April, April puts a little picture up.
Yeah. She's not here with a picture, so.
I will offer that. Yeah? Thank you. Is there a second to the resolution?
One second.
Rod, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Hang on, one second.
In future, is it possible to have a map? If we're not gonna have that, I mean, in future, I'd prefer to see something graphically.
Yeah, typically, you would.
Yeah. I'll pass it this time.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $424,115.13. If there's any questions, I'll direct them to our finance director, Bill Sonmore. If not, I'll look for a resolution authorizing opinion. I'll offer that, your honor. Thank you, Tom.
One second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under board, committing department reports, we'll get an update on our citywide cleanup efforts that are gonna take place this month. I'm gonna turn it over to Guy, but before I do, I just wanted to say, this is an issue that I, that we talked about during the campaign last year, I ran on it, and as we all know, it's easy to talk about things in campaigns. It's actually another issue altogether to actually get them to happen, and we don't, those things don't happen if you don't have staff that's willing to work with you on these issues. And I just have to give Guy Taylor a lot of credit, because it's not something that's in the budget this year, but he saw the importance of it, and he said, let's figure out a way that we're gonna, you know, get this done, at least on some level this year. So, I say thank you, Guy, very much for your efforts to get this moving forward. And Guy and I received a phone call about a month ago from the Shepherd's Network, the clergy association in town, and they said, I know you guys are working on efforts to get to bring back citywide cleanup. How can we help? And so, I thought, well, that's just a great way of the way this community kind of pulls together. We don't have it in the budget to do a full-fledged cleanup like we've done in the past. So, we talked about different ways of, you know, opening up the landfill on certain days, and Guy will go through some of those, through some of those logistics. But, with the help of the Shepherd's Network, what we're gonna do is, those people who are not able to get their stuff to the landfill, we're gonna set up, through the congregations and through the city, a effort to get out to the people who aren't able to bring their stuff. So, I'd like to personally say thank you to the Shepherd's Network and all the people that worked to pull that together, too. So, Guy, do you want to give us the details?
Thank you, your honor. When Ben asked me last fall if this would be something that we could put together, I was, I don't know if excited, but I've seen the need. The need has been growing for many years, so I was glad to hear that there would be some support for something like this. And not knowing really what the cost would be, but knowing that they were gonna be probably large, the history is somewhere, we just don't know where. But, the last time it was done, a full-fledged cleanup where people could just put their stuff up on the boulevards, I think was 1997. So, it's been a long time, and a lot of stuff is accumulating in 20 years. So, not being able to accomplish, you know, a full-fledged cleanup, we did look at ways we could manage a cleanup without being inundated. One of the factors that's inhibiting doing a full-fledged cleanup is our demo cell at the landfill. It's nearing capacity, so we wanted to see how we could limit some items and the amount of traffic that's gonna be out at the landfill. So, what we're gonna do is have each ward set up with a couple different days during a two-week period to haul their stuff out to the landfill for free. So, the first week, it'll be Ward 1, Monday and Tuesday, Ward 2, Thursday and Friday, and then, same pattern in the second week, it'd be Ward 3, Monday and Tuesday, and Ward 4, Thursday and Friday. And we're reserving the Wednesdays of both weeks, just so we can regroup and push piles, clean up, and just get everything back in order so that we can take the next couple days of barraging. But, this ticket is what each utility customer received in their bill, hopefully, today. And we're asking that they bring this with them to the landfill. And this details what can be brought in and the quantities that are allowed for free. We'll, of course, take beyond what's allowed, but we're gonna be charging for it. But, we've limited the number of appliances to two, furniture to two items, TV monitors, TVs and monitors to two, computer materials to two items, small electronics to two. So, we've tried to cut down on what we're gonna be getting in, just to control our costs somewhat. So, it's gonna be starting May 15th, and it'll go through Saturday, May 27th. The landfill hours will be just regular hours, 8 to noon. And then, that Saturday is the day that the Shepherd's Network is gonna be going around to parishioners, neighbors of their churches, and helping pick up items and delivering those items for the people that have the needs.
And that's Saturday, May 20th?
Saturday, May 20th.
Correct.
Yes.
And if somebody in the city has a need.
Shepherd's Network is going to be going around to parishioners, neighbors of their churches, and helping pick up items and delivering those items for the people that have the needs.
And that's Saturday, May 20th?
Saturday, May 20th.
Correct.
Yes.
And if somebody in the city has a need, needs assistance and their church is not participating, there's a number that they can call at City Hall to get on a list, correct?
Yep, that's right. Hopefully, most of the people have a connection at a church and will call the church. But we do have one person that will be designated to handle calls like that here at City Hall. It's Luanne. Number's 332-5423.
Now, you say this is something that's coming out in the utility bills?
Yes.
What about the people who live in the apartment complexes?
Well, this is for residential customers and apartment complexes are considered commercial.
Okay. But if there's, again, if there's a need there, if they contact, I mean, if they have, I mean, let's hope that the apartments don't have a ton of junk there. Well, you know, you're just going to run across the occasional ones that maybe got an outdated computer. That's not going to be large like maybe some of the people in town would be, but I mean, just, I'm just wondering, I mean, is this excluding them if they just have a few items that they need to bring in?
Well, if their owner-manager wants to use their ticket to collect a few items from their complex, we would take that. But we can't take complexes garbage when they're, you know, it's a business. They've got more likely the wherewithal to dispose of things at the regular rates than people, type of people that the Shepherd's Network is looking to help.
Okay. So, May 15th through May 27th are the dates. Saturday, May 20th is the citywide effort where the Shepherd's Network and any other, anyone else who wants to get out and help from 9:00 to 4:00.
Including council members?
Including council members. Yes, that's right. We were going to ask the council members to volunteer that day, either at one of the remote sites or at the dump at the landfill. So, you're all formally invited.
So, Your Honor, just to clarify, so, you know, Monday and Tuesday, the 15th and 16th is Ward 1?
Yes.
And then Thursday and Friday, the 18th and 19th is Ward 2?
Correct.
And Monday and Tuesday, the 22nd, 23rd is Ward 3, and Thursday and Friday, the 25th and 26th is Ward 4?
Yes.
And everybody's cooperating on this Shepherd's Network that has a connection on that Saturday, and that's when you're wanting the council members to chip in?
Yep.
And I'll volunteer Mr. Hicks from our ward to do that. He can drive my pickup truck. Do you want pickups too for that? Like, or do we just comment?
We're not looking for enlisting volunteers, but if you want to check with one of the Shepherd's Network members, they might be able to set you up.
Okay, so we go through the Shepherd's then?
Yeah. What we're looking more like for council members to put on a vest and help out at the landfill, unloading vehicles maybe and directing.
I can supply you gloves while.
Did I hear right on that Saturday, the 20th, there's pizza and pop?
All volunteers are going to have a free event downtown, somewhere downtown.
Just another question. This is just for the update on the committee board and department reports. And I, I'm just suggesting, Your Honor, that we've got like National Resource Committee and some others, we've had some things come up, and I just wondered if we could possibly have maybe some updates. A lot of it's public works, like the questions came about tree planting schedules and what's planted. Update on that. And then NP Park, there's a question about what could be planted there because they said it was very wet. You know, could we use cottonwoods or willows? And then just an update, I guess, in the future on Lake Alice and the rain garden down below. So, because when we get in those committees, sometimes we just keep, we ask, well, what's, where's that at? And we don't really know. So, if we could just get those updates in one of the next meetings under that. Is that all right?
Can we do that on the 15th?
They don't have to be in-depth, but we just need to be up to, you know, up to speed on where we're at.
Yeah. Some of those topics haven't been taken up by that committee yet, so, and we don't really have a date set for our next meeting. So, yeah, but once we do discuss those, we'll bring your report back, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Reports from staff and administrative officers. Update on the RTC redevelopment project. EIC Director Amy Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I just want to provide the first of what we anticipate to be monthly updates to the City Council on the work that's been happening. And since the letter of intent was approved, we've had weekly meetings with the developer and a staff and advisor team. And we've had some, you know, good questions that have come up during there, and that's really where we're at right now, is working to get some of the answers to some high-level questions that really impact the potential of the project and how it would and could look moving forward, specifically looking at implications of that campus designation on this new development group who's looking at the project. So, that's one of the big questions we're working out right now and looking to get some resolution here in the next, within the next week for sure, as the developer group works towards their May 22nd deadline of providing us the next steps that were indicated within the letter of intent. So, that would give us a couple of weeks with that submittal date for a bigger update to be at that first meeting in June to the City Council on that progress point.
So, May 22nd is the, that's the next, that's the deadline?
It's the date in the letter of intent.
Any questions of Amy? Scott?
You said you're answering questions for them or they're answering questions for you? I guess I didn't follow at that.
We're working together to answer questions that are specifically implications related to that campus designation and the national registry. So, providing data that we have to them at their request and then as well, you know, it's things that the city cares about as well as that tract B is being looked at as well. So, it's information that we need to learn and working with the development group on getting them that information as well.
Questions of Amy? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amy. Under old and unfinished business, item number one, we will need a resolution approving the 2017 lifeguard agreement with the YMCA.
Sure, Your Honor, members of the council. Before us is a contract from the YMCA for lifeguards out at Pebble Beach this summer. And the, excuse me, the term of the contract runs from June 12th through August 20th. And the YMCA would staff the hours of 1:30 PM to 5:30 PM on those dates or between those dates. There were some questions about what that dollar amount was. It was proposed this year at $25,670, which would have been the same as 2016. We asked the YMCA to let the executive director to look at that price and see if he could work with us a little bit. Then, pleased to announce that they were willing to go back to their $2015 amount, which is $22,500. So, actually a reduction in price for the same term. And then, they did also agree to add their duties to their staff, including raking the beach area while they're on duty. Right now, we have city staff that go out there and maintain the sand in the beach area. And under this new agreement, they would be willing to take on those additional duties. So, really appreciate the YMCA's willingness to work on coming up with a resolution for some of the concerns that we did have. And we're pleased with this agreement and we recommend moving forward with it.
Any questions of Andrew?
I'll offer that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
Second, Your Honor, I'll just one question. Is the hours the same as before, too?
Your Honor, Councilmember Appert, they are the same, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Andrew? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Next item is discussion on the dairy property. And first, we will get a update and some next steps from Task Force Chairman Steve Erickson.
Mr. Mayor, council members, about two months ago, the Derry Site Task Force was authorized by the City Council. We prepared a due diligence study and presented an executive summary of that, which was adopted at the last council meeting. There are some recommendations that we would like to have approved in order to move forward. I'll be back up just a second. The task force, the purpose of it was to see if there was sufficient information available that would lead the City Council to a conclusion to enter into a purchase agreement. A next step would be to obtain a contingent purchase agreement. During that period of time, additional studies would be undertaken to prove out the theory that it's profitable or a good biz decision, good business decision to go forward with the acquisition of the property. We're kind of at the beginning of, or completion of Phase 1 and starting to move into Phase 2. Ultimately, the recommendation will be either to proceed and provide the answers or to not proceed or to renegotiate the agreement. But at this point, we do not have all the information to be able to say, yes, you should purchase the property or no. We made, I put together six points that I think the city should consider doing that will help us with the next step. The first one, and I'm not sure whether or not that was completed when the executive summary was accepted at the last meeting or not, so I'll restate them. The first issue was a request to authorize reopening of negotiations with Channing Properties for the purpose of achieving a contingent purchase agreement for the dairy site. The second is to appoint a negotiating panel to conduct the negotiations with Channing Property. I've recommended that the Derry Site Task Force have two members on this panel, myself and Chris McCon. I've asked that there be city staff added to it. That is Andrew Bremseth, Bill Sonmore, Brian Deverell. And if possible, I would like to see Anthony Hicks be involved if he has time to do it. Each one of these people has specific information and/or expertise that would be helpful in developing an outline of the contingencies and assisting with being able to make the recommendations. The thought being that there would be one spokesperson negotiating with the seller over property, but a collaboration of ideas and so forth for the group of how do we go about doing that. We asked also, or I'm asking that, that there be legal counsel added to the negotiation panel, that counsel would be approved by, retained by, in fiduciary relationship to the city, not to the Derry Site Task Force. The reason for this is we would like to have legal counsel on certain things. There's a necessity to draft a purchase agreement. There are some issues in this property that are not typical for, let's say, a residential transaction. There are title issues that need to be clarified. Again, the seller's responsibility is to do that, but the buyer's responsibility is to set up what they want, correct it. There are some issues with the environmental, so the, any documentation or agreements need to cover what the responsibilities are of the party. So, in any of it, having an attorney that's available, being able to be part of it, is very important in order to come up with an agreement that's satisfactory. The negotiating panel should have the ability to talk directly with the Department of Employment and Economic Development regarding grants that they have and/or loans. We've talked about different types of things to use for financing, whether it's bonding, whether it's grants, whether it's loans, what's the best decision? How do you, how do you make the best business decision out of that? Being able to talk to them directly, I think, is important. The, the, the thought being that we would, assuming that a transaction is created and completed between the city and, and the seller, again, it's a contingent agreement, contingent on review before it's signed, contingent before there's any action to proceed one way or another. The final thing is the Derry Site Task Force really isn't ending. They're still able to provide information to the negotiating team that's beneficial, and I'll give you an example. One of the questions that comes up is how are we going to pay for the property? And we've also talked about various different grants and loans. There's LCCMR funding that the city received before. Part of that equation is how much of the site is dedicated to that? How much of the site is dedicated to potential redevelopment? Those numbers will be created from that so that you can make a business decision of this is how we want to do it one way or another. So, one thing you would want to know is what's the minimum area of land that you need to have in order to achieve the buffer zones, the bike paths, and so forth that are contemplated? I'm not saying that you would use those numbers, other than just calculations to say, here's, here's what's possible this way or possible that way. These are not, the intention is not to make decisions about how much land should be redevelopment, how much land should be for LCCMR. It's just part of the business equation. Last thing is we would like the ability to expand the membership of the task force if there's somebody that has specific information or experience that could benefit the negotiating team. So, those are my six points that I would like to see approved if possible. So, I guess that finishes that.
Thank you, Steve. Does council have any questions for Steve on the next steps?
Your Honor, yeah, I was jotting these down, and thank you, Steve, for your work because I think it's a very complex and layered, large-scale project, which obviously, you know, you've had experience. And I'm wondering if I, if we suggested that of the six points, I was noting, it looks like point number one, two, and number four could have separate resolutions for action. Points number three and five would be under a working relationship that would be carried forward with those suggested resolutions. Point number six I see as being rolled into number two, the ability to add staff to specific purposes so we wouldn't have to have a separate resolution for the six.
Yeah. The negotiating, the negotiating panel is a distinct group of people. I wasn't thinking of expanding or contracting that. I was thinking of the task force. They're still going to be doing things. The negotiation panel is really part of the task force, the specific group. So, when I, when I talked about adding membership, for example, Paul Bach, and I think many of you know the Bach family from here, is a very talented real estate appraiser. He's out of Minneapolis, but he's here very often. I talked with him about the site and what kind of development you could do on there, and he had some very good ideas. And of course, these are ideas that you can calculate values on. So, he said he'd be very happy to help with that. And there may be other people that could supply information as well. I do want to say that there is not the intention that there would be an immediate development. This is just the background information to make a decision of should we proceed or not.
Thank you, Steve. And I was just going to emphasize that point, and I, the way I understand it too, is what would the cost be to get a green site that could potentially be developed in the future? And then the council's going to have that information that they need to make that decision of whether we go forward or not. I think it's important to re, you know, reiterate that for the public so that the public doesn't think we're buying the dairy tomorrow and is going to sit there and not know what we're going to do with it. This is just to get the information.
No, really, I mean, the decision is how much is the property worth vacant? How much is it going to cost you to get that? And what is the purchase price? So, the purchase price and the cost to create, the cost to create the green site cannot exceed the market value. So, and that's really the theory.
And this contingent purchase agreement is exactly that. It's, the council can say, you know what, this does not make financial sense. We're backing out this agreement at any point.
Backing out of it or renegotiating it, yeah. As I say, the numbers have to match or it doesn't make good business sense to do it.
Thank you, Steve.
Jim? We're also looking for a clean site, correct?
Right, right. And, I mean, we talked about some environmental issues with the property. The way that- The way that the negotiating team would address that is to complete the environmental review of the property. There are still some questions there, there's some issues of soil stability, whether or not it's usable or not usable. The end game is how do you make sure the city doesn't inherit any liabilities associated with environmental, and that they end up with a buildable site at a cost that makes economic sense?
Any other questions for Steve? We have the recommendation from Andrew on the negotiations team, so how does the council wish, so we'll take care of that piece.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Last council meeting, you directed Mayor and I to come up with names for the negotiating team if this were to proceed, and we're pretty close to what Steve is asking for. The names we came up with are the following. Kent Mattson as legal counsel. He was appointed by resolution last year by the city to work on this property. I spoke with Kent earlier today. He expressed an interest to continue doing that. He's got a good knowledge and background of it, and he looks forward to working with us on the project if we proceed. Myself, Brian Yavaro, city engineer, Bill Sonmore, city finance director, Steve Erickson, the task force chair, Chris McCon, as you mentioned. And then the EIC board, I would like them to make an appointment to this group. They talked about this, and I'll let Amy speak more to that, but they talked about this at their last meeting, and they offered some involvement if the city were willing to take them up on that, and I think that would be an appropriate avenue. So, leaving a slot for somebody that the EIC board decides whether that be the executive director or one of the members of the board.
Sure. At the April 20th, EIC board meeting, there was a number of project updates provided to the board, and this project was one of those updates. And in the discussion, there was a motion made as the handout was provided to you that outlined the draft minutes, and that motion to recommend that the city council indeed re-enter negotiations for the acquisition of the property, and, excuse me, to offer that the EIC participate in the negotiation group, panel, team, whatever is being referred to, if the city council would desire such an input. And the thought behind that was that this is a real key economic development project, and the EIC as the economic development arm then would have a direct participation in that discussion as well.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so we have a number of items here I think we need to, so we have the negotiation team, that'll be one, we can have discussion and a resolution on that. The other items outlined in Steve's summary, I think we should take action on those that were clear, clear direction to the negotiating team and to the Dairy Site Task Force.
Your honor, I would offer, I mean, the first order of business in my understanding, logically, and, you know, the rest of you chime in on this, but would be that we authorize the reopening negotiations with Chaney Properties as the first step, and the rest follow from that, that is, the team, et cetera. So, I'm offering that as a resolution.
Yeah, that resolution is.
Second.
Tom, seconds, is there discussion?
Just for clarification, Councilmember Speedall, is your motion or your resolution all encompassing of these?
I'm reading the first, I'm reading the first, the first offering that, your honor, that has been made by Steve, that is the top of the list.
Yep.
To take that word for word as a resolution, a singular resolution that starts the process. And the rest of these, to me, are clarifying or attending to that. So, that's why I'm asking that we consider that first. Is that, I'm not sure if that's your question, but.
It is, your honor, Councilmember Speedall. I just wanted to make sure for the minutes' sake that we are clear on what that motion is, so we're not having to.
So, word for word what we have in front of us, yeah, on the first one.
Any other questions related to this first resolution? Roll call, please.
Sorry. Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Now, I think we can accomplish a couple of these other points in resolution if the council so desires. Andrew, did you have any suggestions on any of the other items on this summary?
Your honor, if you're wanting to proceed with all of these items, I would suggest that we wrap them into one or two actions rather than six individual actions. So, if you're in agreement that, you know, Steve's request, number two, with the negotiating team is a little bit at odds with mine, just because mine's more complete, I think, with a few additional names. So, you know, you may want to clarify which direction you want to take on that, but otherwise, I think, you know, these recommendations as presented, if that's something the council feels would be sufficient for a motion or for a resolution.
I think, your honor, if I could just make a, you know, some of these have particularities to be discussed. If we're going to discuss them all as a group, we'll have a lot of things to adjust, and so I guess I'm going to go back to my original suggestion, and it's fine, however you want to get it done. I think our attorney can weigh in on this, but singular motions and resolutions are easier to handle, or at least we'll have a discussion about it without complicating it with everything. So, I think the second one, we should discuss what is the consistency of this negotiation panel along with the continuation of the task force. That would be my suggestion, because there are some things to discuss there.
And I would say that, you know, you have a list of names before you. If that's the list that you wish to go with, then that makes sense just to offer a resolution, and then you can take care of task number two. Yeah, so, Anthony, or, I'm sorry, Andrew, at the last council meeting, council directed Andrew and myself to put together the list. The only difference, I guess, is you may mention to legal representation, and there's not a member of the EIC board. So, the council, I guess it's up to the council of what direction.
And Councilmember Hicks as well.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about you, Anthony, sorry.
Really?
He's easy to forget.
Would Anthony be part of the, for the EIC, or would the EIC board come back? Are you still on the EIC?
I am, and I was kind of, basically, at the EIC board meeting, we discussed, obviously, a letter of support or a motion of support for, you know, the city entering renegotiation with Chaney. And, you know, the other item that, obviously, we discussed, but we didn't have as many board members there as we would have liked, but we want to have a further general discussion about, obviously, you know, the contribution to this. So, I mean, I think it's an important property for the city that we have to get a handle on what is it actually going to cost. And also, I think the other side of it too is what is the potential of the property from a tax base going forward? And I think that's another important part of the decision-making process that we need to have, you know, that, you know, we are going to lose Houleit Plant here shortly, which will obviously reduce, you know, it's a significant property, you know, tax that comes in, and is this, is this piece of property something that can, it's not going to obviously cover it completely, but we, this is a piece of property that actually has the potential to add value greater than what it's contributing today. And so, that's kind of, that was the discussion we had, is like, what can it, what can it do for us?
Your honor, if I, so, Amy or Anthony, were you guys encompassing the EIC member being Hicks in a dual role as a city council member and the EIC because he's on the board? Or were you anticipating somebody else from the EIC?
We didn't discuss specific people at the EIC board.
Your honor, that's why I left it as appointment from the EIC board, because I think that board needs to discuss what their involvement could look like or should look like, and who that is going to be.
I don't make a recommendation, did we add to Andrew's list? Let's add Anthony to Andrew's list, and then the EIC board can determine whether they want Anthony to be that EIC representative, or if the EIC board wants a separate representative from the EIC board. Is that fair enough?
Fair enough. That'll be fine.
Does that work?
Your honor, yeah, another question on the names?
Yes.
We have had various discussions, and I know that, you know, that Steve has looked at different options, but is not interested in making a recommendation. But without going too far, I think we have to say that I have to raise a question if Kent Mattson actually has the time to do the job that we need to do. And I would prefer that we have a specific person chosen or recommended by a combination of Steve and yourself and our city administrator just to take on this project. And I don't want to go into specifics, but this requires time, and there may be some indication that there is not enough time right now in his schedule to do that. And I'm just saying respectfully, your honor, I think that's something we have to seriously consider. This is very time-sensitive. It will take specific action, and if, and I think there should be an awareness that maybe Mr. Mattson is very busy, and we may be better served by getting someone singularly just for this, so.
Your honor, members, I spoke to Kent Mattson today about this exact issue, and he indicated that he does have the time and has the desire to serve in this capacity. He also indicated that if there was an instance where he needed additional help, he would give us the legal recommendation on who that would be, or who else should be plugged into this to make this successful. So, I guess my recommendation will remain that Kent is legal counsel, and that was what was asked of Mayor and myself, is to bring those names forward. So, Kent is certainly adequate to perform this task and is wanting and willing to do that.
Any other discussions?
Scott?
I'll make the motion, we'll move ahead with the recommendation.
So, the list would be?
List except for what the EIC.
Kent Mattson.
Resolution, I'm sorry, resolution.
Kent Matt, the list will read Kent Mattson, Andrew Bremseth, Brian Yavaro, Bill Sonmore, Steve Erickson, Chris McCon, Anthony Hicks, and an appointment from the EIC board.
Yes.
I will second that.
Second? Jim, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Bernson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Upton.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Okay. The, just going by the paragraphs here, the third paragraph, I don't know that we need to take action on that unless there's something that I've been missing in there. I don't think we need to take action on that third paragraph.
Excuse me, the only purpose of having that there was so that it isn't assumed that the task force is just disappearing, that this is kind of a second phase of it, so.
Got it. Thank you. So, I do believe we could, the last three items, I think we could roll into a resolution, given them authorization to, the negotiating team that authorization, to speak with the.
Yeah, that all sounds direct to the task force, so I think you can, you can combine those.
The last three.
Yeah.
And then including that to add, include Paul Bach, as far as the task force itself.
Excuse me, yes, thank you. And if we come across some other issue where there's somebody that has expertise that we can utilize, do we need to come back, or can we just make the request of them?
I think I heard your suggestion is that you give the task force the authority to bring more members in.
Yeah.
And I think that would be contemplated as part of a prospective motion if someone wishes to make that. Do we have a motion to that effect? The last.
The motion.
I'll second that, your honor.
So, could we hear the motion, your honor?
So, the motion would be to authorize the negotiation panel to negotiate with Deed, in any other language in paragraph four, that the negotiation panel provide periodic updates to the council, and that the Dairy Site Task Force has the ability to expand its membership based upon members they think would add expertise.
So, how does that, that last one read? That the Dairy Site membership be expanded to include Paul Bach and others as needed?
That the task force has the ability to expand their membership to include members if they believe.
Has the ability to expand, okay.
Expand their membership.
Thanks.
May. Task force may expand its membership. Any other discussion? That's a motion, so all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Item number three, under old business, we will need a re-resolution of support for legislative corporation request for library construction grants. Aaron, did you want to just give us a little updated, a little background on this? It's stalling in the legislature, I assume.
Yes. So, this, on your tables, I understand you have a copy of the resolution of support that was submitted to the legislature last session, and so this would be an updated resolution from the city in support of bonding money for public library construction grants. And this is, as a reminder, is the type of funds that, if made available, the city would be able to apply for up to a million dollars in these grant funds for the library expansion project. And currently, the bonding bill has not been released from the House, so this would be a timely resolution. And there is a version in the Senate that does include $2 million in library construction grant funding. So, this is just, as the mayor said, a re-resolution request in support of the public library construction grant.
I'll answer that, your honor.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions of our library director? If not, roll call, please.
Bernson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Upton.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Under new business, item number one is discussion of the part-time employee at the liquor store. Andrew, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll quickly touch on it. This is pursuant to the discussion from earlier this evening regarding the operations of the liquor store, and our human resources director, Mike Hartwell, is here with us this evening, and he can address some of those needs and justification for this added position.
Thank you, your honor, and members of the council. As we discussed earlier this evening, we currently have gap coverage in our liquor store. Currently, our staffing is at best very skinny. In other words, whenever we have an employee that needs to take vacation, sick time, other type of personal leave, we typically have our managers covering the front till, front end. And with the onset of Sundays being potentially included in our schedules, it certainly has opened up a real void in our scheduling. Also, we have a transition occurring here in the next 18 to 20 months with the retirement of our current liquor store manager. We have our assistant liquor store manager that's in training for that position, but finds it difficult to spend any quality time with that current store manager to do all the transition duties and training up to assume that role. So, this additional staff member would help to offset some of the demand and provide some additional time for them to do proper training. And last but not least, the anticipated cost for this 75% position, which would include all wages, applicable benefits, taxes, and whatnot, including insurance, would be approximately between $35,000 to $41,000, depending on what type of insurance coverage that employee would elect. So, I bring before you, the council tonight, a resolution to approve that part-time position.
Any questions of Mike or Andrew?
I'm making that resolution, motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Brent, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Bernson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Is there anything else under new business from the council? Okay. Under announcements, I guess we've already had those two meetings, so we don't need to announce them.
Didn't you have another announcement?
Fifteenth, I suppose. Late fifteen.
Fifteenth is the...
Meeting at 4:30.
Yeah.
Council meeting at 5:30. Hope to see everyone there. Is there anything else to come before the council?
There's one announcement, a meeting.
You had one?
Tomorrow night, a neighborhood meeting with the Woodland Heights residents on streetlights, if anybody's interested.
May 2nd, what time, guy?
5:30.
5:30, here at City Hall Council Chambers, neighborhood meeting on streetlights in Woodland Heights. So everyone's invited and encouraged to attend that. Steve Plaza has an announcement.
Good evening. I'd just like to remind everybody, this Friday, we're having our annual Arbor Day tree planting at 10:00 a.m. at the Pebble Lake Beach, so you're all invited to plant some trees with us.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else to come before the council? If not, we will adjourn to a closed meeting as permitted by the attorney-client privilege to discuss an active or threatened litigation matter per Minnesota statutes. I do not believe we will...